Of any property that's affected has to be provided notice. Well, the person who lives at 251 feet or 501 feet gets all bent out of shape that they didn't get notice, it would be impossible for the township to do anything more than what's legally required when it comes to those notices. And so I think when we're talking about information's widely distributed, I think that that's probably one of the, one of the issues that they're, that they're, that they're talking about. So it comes down again to education.
Right.
You know, and, and a lot of the times when those things are either before the Board of Supervisors, I know that, you know, since January, it's the only thing I can cap it to, is that we had Rich sort of given overview or John give an overview. I, I don't know if they do that, and I think Suzanne was with me when we were talking about this, the zoning hearing board level, that maybe it's the zoning hearing board, you know, again, that maybe they need to do a better job of explaining things, but it then puts such an onerous on them in terms of productivity and everything to sit there and explain everything. But I don't know.
I, I think, I think it might be an older comment, because I think, I, I gotta be personally honest, I think it's a lot better than it was even a year ago, and then a few years prior to that, it's even much, much better.
I mean, even with-
And I know you always tell people in a meeting, look on the website for these things. You're always referencing where they can find these things when you, when you talk a lot of times at the hearing, at the meeting.
And it's even, I mean, perfect example is George Scherz's road program. I mean, people don't realize, every single week on Friday, he posts an update of where that program is, what they've accomplished, and the issues that they're facing. I mean, when I get a comment, when I get an email, the first thing I do regarding that road program is I see what Rick, I keep calling him Rich, see what George put on there. And if George puts something on there, I'm using, oh, I think Sonia probably lost power.
Okay. Suzanne?
Yeah.
Can I ask you to take notes? You don't, you don't even have to put it up, just take notes. That's all I'm asking.
What do I just have to get a Word document?
Just open up a Word document, please.
All right, you guys, knock it off.
No.
I'm gonna minimize this for a minute.
Well, I don't know, I don't know how we're gonna do the top one on the page 40. I think, I think everybody wishes that would be possible. I don't think that's, that's feasible.
Top one on page 40.
You're not gonna control county taxes?
Yeah, I don't think that's feasible.
Yeah, you know, I, I think we should take the public comment. I, I think we should take the public comment under consideration. I think that when we look at what we're trying to accomplish are the outcomes. And so when, when I, when I think about that, and I'm thinking about some goals that we could have, I do think that one of the things that's become clear over almost every meeting we've had was this idea that we needed, we need to do some better education to the public of where things are available. And, you know, I, I, one of the goals, and I'll bring it up later this evening, that I'm working on for one of the others, and I think it would fit here as well, is this concept that maybe we do just, we make a really hard effort at taking and, and trying to really spend seven or so weeks to, to really get that information out every week, just to kind of almost beat people up with it so that it's, like, nobody could get the excuse that they didn't know what was there.
I'm sorry, Steve, this is Sonia. I'm sorry to interrupt. I got knocked off the video, so I'm connected by the telephone now, and I just wanted to let you know that.
Yeah, and that's great. Thank you for coming back. If you'll just go ahead, and if you can just still take notes, and then when we go back into the other one, if you can bring it up, great. If not, if you can just send it to me, I'll bring it up.
Okay, I'll do that.
I'm on the township computer, there's not Word laptop, there's not Word on this.
Yeah, it's, it's, you have the one that's just the basics piece.
Yeah.
So that would be great, thank you.
Steve, when the people talked about the police, are they talking about, are they talking about, like, where are they talking about this, like in St. Albans and then Acme? I mean, where would you put people walking around? I mean, I'm, I'm a little-
Can I actually answer that? Because when I did my ride around, and I'm sorry, Steve, I totally jumped in front of you, but-
That's fine.
I did my ride around, Todd Welsh, who was, who I was assigned to for the ride around, told me that Chris actually has a policy or, or whatever it is, that they are actually required to do a footbeat every day, every shift that they have. And so, you know, when Todd and I went, it was the night shift, so it was seven in the, seven at night until seven in the morning. I made it till three. And I, he, we actually got out of the car at both Springton Point and the New Town Square Shopping Center, and this is, you know, all the shops are closed, so it might have been like around 11 o'clock, and made sure that their doors were closed. And he did tell me, and I asked him, I said, do you just do this at night? He said, no, we are, you know, required to do it per the chief's policy or directive, to do it once a shift, that they go out there and they have to do a, a walk in either the New Town Square Shopping Center or where Casey's is, now the Ellen's Preserve, I guess, when that starts getting constructed. And the same thing is true with, I won't get into that, we're going down a rabbit hole, but yeah, they, they do do that already.
Okay, good. All right, well.
I'm getting confused.
I learned something tonight.
I'm getting confused. I thought we were doing the outcomes and then just referring to the, the public comments as examples of things the public said, rather than responding to each public comment.
I think that's what Steve's trying to do, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah. No, I think the importance of the public comment is to kind of try to understand why we got to the outcomes that we did. And so, you know, I do think that's important. You know, like, I'm, if I can, you're going back to the first outcome, that information is clearly presented, readily available, well organized, easily retrievable. One of the comments that we did get, what related to the website, was sometimes that it was hard to find things on the website. So as I've shared with a couple staff members, you know, when we get ready to upgrade the website again, which will be in about four years, but even between now and then, I think we ought to consider, you know, maybe creating a, a group, a, a website user group, that would come in and really help us understand where people get lost, where people are looking for things and saying, I wanna find this and I can't find it. And so that we would better understand how, maybe of how to structure things, you know, once you get into government, you think a certain way, and I, I'm sorry to say that it is brainwashing, you know, you really, you, you start putting things in certain buckets, but I'm not always sure that somebody who's not doing it every day thinks in the buckets that we think in. And so I do think that that's important.
Steve?
Yes?
One of the other things too, that I don't know residents are aware of, and we constantly are bringing it up, they can sign up for notifications-
Yes.
Anytime anything is posted, it goes right to their email. Not only is it a link, it explains the entire post. So that would immediately deliver things directly to their mailbox.
I, I would say that anyone who's not getting our emails, it's only because you haven't, no, sure email address. I will also caution though, I know that I have to constantly go into my spam sometimes and find the emails from Catherine, because sometimes I end up getting directed there because it's coming from a quote mailing list. But the, the, the resource is there, and I think we need to encourage more people, advise them that it exists, encourage more people to give us your email addresses so we can put you on the list.
They can go ahead and sign up right on the website, John. They can go ahead and sign up for whatever committee, whatever blast they want. Kathy's, that's from Facebook, and that's a challenge, because mine keep going into junk, and I don't, I don't know why. I've cleared that post, but it just keeps going there. But for the website, they go in there, put the email address they want, and pick what they wanna hear about.
Maybe you could come up with a simple set of instructions for how to use the website, including using the search function. And we found with the, when we were trying to get public participation with the strategic plan, we had to hit all kinds of media. So maybe you'd wanna send out emails or post things, or maybe even a mailer, but maybe if you could just send some simpler, some simple set of directions. When I go to the website, I just put in the search rather than jungle, jump all over the place, I just go-
Right.
-for.
Right.
If somehow we could get that out to the public, maybe that would help, at least for now, until you redo the website.
Yeah.
But I would hit it from different directions, as, because we had to find all kinds of ways to get to the public, to get them to respond to us.
Yeah. All right. Under Township fiduciary and business processes are efficient and effective, you know, again, you might say we're pretty close to being there in a lot of ways. I think there are two things that I would put out there. One for sure, I think we should be really achieving the, I think we just lost somebody.
I think.
Leonard, I guess. I think we should, I think we should be achieving the budget award. And that, if we do that, there's, it's very, it's onerous to get it, but it, it gives a tremendous amount of information to the public, and it requires us to do a very public process. And so I think that that's, I think that that's something. The other would be if we did, and even if we didn't get as far as doing a, a true comprehensive financial report at, at the end of every year, which we're working towards, we ought to be at least doing what's considered a public-facing financial report. And that ends up being a little bit more of a, it's more like a five or 10-page document versus a 200 to 300-page document. I don't think most people are gonna read the 200 to 300-page document.
I don't think most people are gonna read a 200 to 300-page document.
But, but I do think that it should be there for those who want to. It's very important when you go for bonds and things like that, it becomes clear. Again, that's one of those things that if we do it and we, you know, put it out there and get it reviewed by other municipal people, you know, if we can say, kind of like we have a certified police department, we have a certified financial place, people, group, that makes a big difference as well, or financial department, and I think that that's important.
And you are working toward that?
And we are working towards that. One of the challenges for the, for the, for, for the comprehensive financial reports, it requires 10 years' worth of data.
Yeah.
And, you know, not to, not to-
We get it.
We, there just wasn't 10 years of data when I came. And so we're working on doing that. And so we've got five good years in now, and actually, I think we have six, because we went back and recreated the year before. And so we continue to add to that base.
So you're saying we're four years away from the budget award?
Well, no, I think we could do the budget award within the next couple of years. I think we're probably four years away before we can do a full caper. But I think in between now and then, we could put together kind of a public-facing document. You know, I've seen some that are slick as like a, a trifold that just talks about the finances and it gets mailed out to the entire township.
I, I think that'd be a great idea. You know, the ones I've seen have pie charts and bar charts, and then I think that's what people wanna see, you know, how your tax dollars spent, a little pie chart that shows where all the money is. I mean, we don't need to, nobody's trying to get bogged down in the details, but just simple things presented to them so that that information is there. And yeah, if we could email it out, put it on township website, even if we mailed out to everybody, I mean, that's, you know, I think that'd be a great idea.
Easy to understand.
That's one of the things that I would add to that.
Okay.
Any other thing under the Township fiduciary and business processes are efficient and effective?
Man, I think you're doing a great job, Steve. So I, you really increased the game, brought us up to speed on all this, made sure that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. So I, I look at this directive and I go, okay, obviously you've identified some room for improvement, but I think we've come a long way-
Yeah.
-than I first got involved on the board, so a long, long way, I'll say.
Well, I'd like to keep taking us further.
Good.
I do think there is, there is probably a point that we ought to review any process that we have and make sure that it's functioning well. And, you know, one of the things we've talked about is that, you know, every process should probably be reviewed within a five-year period at least one time, that you don't get, you know, it's like the old concept of, you know, why did, why did your mom cut the ham in half? You know, because her, her mother cut the ham in half? Well, why did her mother cut the ham in half? Well, because it didn't fit in the oven when it was whole. And so, you know, it's, it, you know, if you're doing something because you're doing it the same way over and over again, just because it's always been done that way, doesn't make it the best way to do it. And going back to the concept of trying to be preeminent, says that we're doing it such a way that other municipalities and other organizations look to us for how we're doing it. And so I think that that requires a regular review of everything we're doing and saying, are we doing best practices? And so that would be the other thing I would add there. Under the next item was Township elected and appointed officials, appointed officials and staff are all accessible, helpful to residents and business owners.
Okay.
Any thoughts?
Again, I, I really think we have come a long way. I think we are extremely accessible, helpful. I have a hard time with some of these, because I, I know what we do in the office, that's where I would go back to what Mike said, is if we had a little bit more clarification, what are they comparing it to?
But you, here's the thing I think we need to remember. And, you know, you can do something really well, and you do one time that somebody walks away with a bad experience, and they remember the bad experience. They don't remember the five times that everything went really well. And so every time you have a bad experience, it's a, it's an issue, because it has a lasting impact on the image of what somebody gets, you know, how the phone is answered when you call in, that first person that picks up.
Right.
You know, that's your first impression, and that's lasting. And, you know, so all of those things are, are a key, is how we respond and how we, you know, look, we all have those bad days, and it's just like one more person complaining about something, you just wanna hang up and say, I've had it, you know? But you, you can't do that, and you have to, you make sure we don't do that. One of the thoughts I had related to this is that we probably ought to do a survey specifically in, when people come in and experience service, whether it's a phone call, or whether it's at the window, or through email. We, we ought to be doing surveys of those folks on a random basis and asking them how they're, what they experienced and what it was like. And then be evaluating that, and I think if we did a survey upfront, we could get a score, and then we could say that we expect a 25% improvement over the next two or three years, or four years, whatever that period is, depending on how bad the score is. If the score's really bad, I would expect a much bigger improvement very quickly versus, you know, if you get a score of nine out of 10, you probably say thankful, and you just move on, right? Because if you're doing 90%, I, I consider that hitting a home run. But it, again, it's that kind of thing, and until you have something to measure it with, it's really hard to know whether, it's, it's easy to say we think we're doing something, but if we're not measuring it, we don't know what somebody has experienced. Just because I think I've done a really great job handling a situation, somebody may come back and say, he didn't listen to all what I said. You know, he gave me an answer, but it wasn't the one I was asking for. And so that's the key.
The other, from, from my perspective, I think, and from a staff perspective, I think that it's difficult at times, because we are there to give people the answers that they sometimes don't want.
Yeah.
And when you do that, I, I don't believe that, I, I believe that on the other side of it, they kind of shut down in the information receiving it. So we still, and we do have the problem that, you know, we're speaking in our bucket, and they're not listening in our bucket, they're listening in their bucket. But, but it is difficult to convey information to anyone that isn't exactly what that individual wants to hear. And I do, I, I do get somewhat concerned with, you know, a survey, because I think we're gonna get negative marks from those that we give that information to. You know, I, when, when it's a difficult, when it's not the information they want, we'll probably get a negative survey result. If it's the information they do want, we'll get a positive result. So I, I mean, education is definitely key, and I, I do know, I, you know, I, I listen to Zach, how he speaks to people over the phone, and I'm very impressed with that. I listen to Kathy and how she conveys information, she's very knowledgeable. I, I think everyone in the office really tries to give the best possible information. I just don't know how well that's received when it's not what the individual wants to hear.
Well, and that will always be-
Sure, it will.
... an issue, but I think that a survey, you know, if you ask the right kinds of questions, look, you can always ask the question, did you get the answer you wanted? And, you know, if the answer is no to that, I expect them not to be as happy with the process. But the really thing is, what I wanna look for is how we dealt with people, not did we give them the answer that they absolutely wanted.
Oh, yeah.
Because there's gonna be times that we have to give them an answer that's not, I mean, I can't give both the homeowner who's got a complaint and the one who's got to complain against them exactly what they want. It just doesn't- And sometimes I can't make either one of them excited about what the decision is.
Right.
So I, I think, but I do think that we can, we can measure how we're doing in the process.
And it could be a, a matter of perception. You may be doing a great job, but if some reason, for some reason they're perceiving they're not being treated properly, it might be just a PR issue, or just something on having a workshop on dealing with people. You know, just because someone perceives something doesn't mean it's true-
Right.
-the way it's coming across.
Right.
Any other thoughts related to Township elected and, and appointed staff accessible and helpful to residents? Township stakeholders are included, respected, valued by Township staff, elected and appointed officials and committees who are accessible and helpful. It's actually very similar to the one above.
We know who's got the dog.
Not me.
Steve, this is Sonia.
Yeah.
With respect to this item, I think you're right. I think this has been addressed underneath them before, particularly with respect to how you communicate the information. Whether the answer is yes or no, sometimes when you communicate it, could make a difference, could give a different impression, and the person, whether they like the answer or not, at least might walk away with, all right, I was heard, and I understand why they made that decision.
Yeah. And I think that that's important, you know, I, I know a lot of times, you know, and I'm guilty of this, you know, I give somebody an answer, but I don't always give all the reasons behind why we're where we are. We, part of the, is the problem is we just know it, you know? And sometimes you have to spend, spend the time and really just communicate more as to the underlying pieces to it as well. And, you know, sometimes we're busy and the whole idea is how quickly can I get through this to the next thing that I have to do? And, you know, we, it's, it's, are we, are we taking the time to make sure, you know, particularly from a staff side, that we're explaining things in such a way that people not only understand, yes, I understand I didn't get what I wanted, but I was heard, and, you know, the person at least answered what I, what it was that I was asking. And so that, to me, that's a real big key in the process. Any other thoughts related to either of these two items in particular?
I, I don't get any complaints from folks that say we're not accessible. I mean, you know, the, I think the, the accessibility that we demonstrate in the Township building, I think folks can go in there all the time. I, I think as Andy pointed out originally, that the biggest issue might be the fact that they're just not getting the answers they wanna get. Saying that we're not accessible, well, no, what they really mean is not giving you the answer you want. And I don't think we need to. We gotta give them what the correct answer is.
Sure.
They just might not like it. And I wonder if some of these comments are driven by some of those folks who didn't get the answers that they wanted to get. Because I, I guess I don't get a lot of comments that we're not accessible. I mean, maybe as supervisors, aside from Lenny, we're not as accessible. I'm not suggesting we should be more accessible, because just based on the fact that, you know, we all have other lives to lead too. It's not a full-time job for us as it is the Township staff, but at the same time, I mean, I, I just can't, I, I don't have anything to add, because I can't think of examples where we're, we're not being accessible.
Okay. I was just trying to look at some of the comments to see real quick if there was something that would help give us a little bit more clarification.
Swan says more transparent with Township finances. I don't know how we could be any more transparent.
Yeah.
This is Sonia again. I think the real issue is the consistency. You know, somebody might get, might feel like they have the same question in listener as the person in Florida Park, but they come away with different answers. And maybe the answers weren't consistent by mistake, or maybe the questions weren't really similar. But so maybe rephrasing questions, and then we can ensure that the answers are consistently given, might be helpful.
That's a good point.
You know, we, we've actually talked about that, particularly George and I, with so many things that come through Public Works. You know, you get a question asked one way, and you go to answer it, and you get a question asked, it's not quite the same, and so you answer it a little bit differently, and people assume you've answered the question two different ways, even though the question itself was different, and so it, it actually got a different answer. And so, you know, we've even talked about trying to create almost like an answer board, where there's, it's almost like a flip chart, you know? If you ask this type of question, here's the answer that we give. And, you know, we wanna still keep things personal, you know? I, I love the, the fact that we get to talk to people directly, so I don't wanna lose, I don't wanna get so, that it's almost something that you could've just pushed a button and you, you get this answer that's word for word this way every time, but yet, there should be consistency in that answer and clarification. And I think, Sonia, you've made a great point, is are we, are we repeating back what the question is to make sure we're answering the question in the right way?
Is there an opportunity on the website to create like a frequently asked questions type of thing, and, and even for various departments and things like that? You know, obviously more of a long-term goal, but would that help the problem? If somebody could get on there and, and if everybody's asking the same question, we have a list of answers, you know, for those same questions, is that at least going to help people even craft a proper question?
Well, and also make sure that our folks are answering the proper way, you know?
Right.
You know, every time we hire somebody, or, you know, we, we add somebody or move somebody to, you know, you answer a question, that one of the challenges we have is you've got so many different disciplines that are going on all at the same time, and, and yet you've got one or two people who are answering the questions that everybody's, who's, for everybody who's calling in. And so, you know, on a typical basis, and so there's a lot of, there's a lot of information that somebody has to know, or at least know who to refer somebody to related to those issues. And so, and, you know, look, we all do this. We get enough information that we think we can answer something, because we're trying to be helpful, and sometimes we are stopped being helpful, because we're answering only with, we've heard the information, but we haven't really heard all of the information that goes along with it. And, you know, so sometimes we don't necessarily respond with the best answer, but I think that, John, you're, to your point, if we created a spot on the website that really did answer frequently asked questions, and I think we have a spot that does that already, but, you know, really beef that up- but, you know, really beef that up, that we could, that we, it would make it better.
And I like your point too about having internal documents that people can use to guide them in offering the same consistent, proper answer. You know, you, you call the power company, they, the, the people that answer the phone have a three binder with all the answers right in it. You ask a question, they go there, they find the answer so that you get the same exact answer, no matter who you talk to there. Well, I mean, that's going to help us be more responsive too. If we can give everybody, everybody to calls gets the same answer.
Yep. That kind of does jump down into the number five, that we're uniformly enforcing all township ordinances, codes, policies and directives. You know, that I think that kind of is that same concept is that people want to make sure that it's, that it's the same. And no matter what happens, where, you know, and I think going back to Sonia's issue, you know, like, you know, not only did you get the same answer if you're from Listor or from, you know, the avenues, but it, that it were, you're treated the same based on the, on what the issue is. You know, if we, if we're dealing with high grass one place, we're dealing with high grass everywhere. If we're dealing with, you know, and one of the challenges is sometimes we just don't even know about it. So, you know, how do we handle that? We, we were having a discussion even this week related to the stormwater piece that we talked about two times ago. And, you know, how, how do we make sure that a stormwater complaint gets handled consistently all the way through? Because somebody calls it in and it, the way they present it, it might be a codes issue. They, they present it differently, it might be a public works issue. And if they present it just a little bit differently, it might be considered an engineering issue. And so, you know, right now, it, it then gets, you know, a person who's sitting at a front desk is feeding it to one of those areas based on what they hear. And yet, once it gets in, if the person calls back a second time, it might go to somebody different just because of how they asked the question. And we've had situations where Andy's working at the issue, George is working the issue because they've gotten it, either one got it by email, one got it by a phone call and they're handling it based on what they see. And all of a sudden, we realize we've got two people handling it, but it's, you know, how do we bring things about to make sure that we're properly addressing whatever it is and making sure that we've evaluated it so the right people are addressing it at the time? And so, we were really talking about how to do that. And that's, that's probably a bigger challenge for us just because we're small and, you know, we, we don't have a ton of staff. And so, as we're trying to evaluate some of these things, it becomes very difficult. You know, you don't have somebody whose job it is just to kind of review all complaints and decide who gets it and, you know, and to really totally understand it, you know? Somebody gets the call and kind of directs it to where they think they are, but they don't necessarily know enough to, it's just impossible to know all the right answers. And so, we're, we're working through some ideas about how certain things might go to a group of people or to a key person who can make a decision and then get it to the right group of people.
What makes sense on the website where we have breakdowns of staff to have a list of things that are covered under each person's or department's responsibility? In other words, if you have a question about X, this is who you should ask for. If you have a question about Y, this, you know, something to give an idea that people might call up and they're just calling the township. They don't know who to call. So maybe they know they got a stormwater issue, they got to call. I mean, and, and again, that, that's fraught with peril too. But at least as a starting point to give our people, tell them who they should ask for when they, they call in, you know, not rely on a person answering the phone to direct them.
Normally, everybody just starts, if we start with the township manager, he'll know. And I have to tell you, most of the time I don't. You know, because I just don't know all the details, you know, and I can't. But it's, you know, I used, I, I at least know who should, they should be going to. But it's like, if we can help them get to that right person first, that's, that's, they, it's an easier spot for them. Any other thoughts related to that? I mean, I, I have to say, I feel, and I, you know, I don't want to just say this because I think that we, you know, it's, it is me, but it, and it's, and it's Andy. But I, I feel that as a whole, we're very consistent in trying to equally enforce ordinances and, and codes and policies and directives. We, we try very hard not to allow it to be based off of an individual or, you know, we, we just, you know, if it comes up, we try to deal with it the same for everybody. You know, obviously, when things get way out of whack, in some cases, it feels like it's different. You know, as it escalates up. But if people respond the same, we, we try to treat them with the same level of, of act. You know, we, we, we don't always start with a notice. And, you know, typically we start with just a warning, just so that people get a chance to respond. It's when you've done it three or four times that we stop the warnings and we go right to notices, you know? And so, people are saying sometimes that we're not treating people the same. But how many times did you get the warning before we went right to the notice on the next go-go? And I think that, I will say this, I think that the fact that the board agreed and made the decision to bring in a codes person and have a zoning person on staff has made a difference because we have a consistency of that person versus, you know, have, we were using a third party to do a lot of those things. And so, a third party was out looking at it. And, you know, you get seven different inspectors and there's going to be seven different answers. And so, if we can keep the inspectors as much as possible the same, I think we end up with a better product with that in more consistency.
And Steve, I, I mean, that's exactly what I was thinking while we were having this discussion. That was one of the reasons why I was, I was thankful that the board knew, offered me the job. But that was one of the reasons why I was not really comfortable in third-party work because you were, there was a lack of continuity. And, and I do think that the board's decision to, you know, bring a staff person on board helped level that playing field. It, it offered that continuity. And I'm thankful that you chose me to do that. But I mean, I really think that that brings the continuity and factor into it.
Any other thoughts related to this or any of the other outcomes that we're looking at?
No, as I said, I mean, a lot of what was in here, you know, I honestly think we've taken care of or are on the way of taking care of. I didn't, there wasn't a lot here that concerned me. Now, you know, I mean, I know at times we've talked about a communications director, maybe that helps with some of this. I, I know prior to COVID, you and I were doing the gets together once a month. I think that was all part of the outreach and accessibility. Obviously, we can't do that right now. I mean, if I thought, I, I mean, I guess if we, we thought people could log in or would log in on it to a Zoom meeting, I suppose we could do it that way. But I'm not necessarily suggesting we should do that. You know, so I, I don't, I mean, I've read the comments, some of them just don't even make any sense. You know, we have no control over county taxes. We can't, oh, Leonard's back.
You're muted.
Oh, muted, Leonard.
My, I was just texting, my work called me, so I had to jump off, so I apologize.
That works.
We just assigned everything to you, Leonard.
I closed the, I closed my computer and I guess it just disconnected me. So, sometimes, because I was worried you guys were going to hear what I was saying.
I would have muted you.
It's never stopped you before.
So, work, Leonard, we're kind of down to the point of, we've actually talked about all five of the outcomes.
Well, I want to go back to number one. I'm just kidding.
But do you, do you have, is there something in particular you'd like to, you know, give some thought to related to any one of those five?
Um, no, the only thing that I, I guess, if there's anything that I want to add to anything, I guess it would be bullet points three and four. So the township elected and appointed officials and staff are accessible and helpful to residents and business owners. I think that for the most part, we do that already, especially for the township staff. I think that what happens is that people get the answers they don't want to hear. And I think that that comes off as they don't care or they're not interested when in actuality, I think we're, we're prohibited from a lot of things because, you know, we did the law or because it's just something we can't do or it's not an issue that the township gets involved in, right? And then, to that same, to that same point, I'm sorry, to point number four, I guess it would be, is that, you know, I, I think that when we get to the point where we hire a director of public relations or public relations officers or whatever the position is. Say it again.
Communications director.
Communications director, that a lot of people in this township are going to see the information is there, but now it's being pushed out more readily available. You know, and, and that people are going to, there's going to be someone who is going to be able to handle that a little bit more than just, you know, overbearing Suzanne or Catherine Sparr or Andy or even you, Steve. So, now, I mean, I think that that's, that's, that's it. And then, I guess the last one is, I'll just add this too, is that, again, I, I think that township codes and ordinances are uniformly enforced, but people don't understand, like when they look at, you know, when they see a new development coming in, they just don't understand what the different zoning districts allow them to, to have and what they can't have. And there's also, you know, issues with, for instance, if I wanted to put a deck on the back of my house and maybe the zoning hearing board 10 years ago denied my neighbor, well, it's, it's a completely different ballgame, you know? Just because we're neighbors doesn't mean that they are similar properties by any way, stretch of the imagination. And I think that that again goes to the education. It's the difficult part where, you know, you can't have the zoning hearing board sitting there and explaining all this in great detail because then those meetings are going to go until 12 o'clock at night. You know, property law is, and zoning is one of the most complicated areas of law. And you need to be very sophisticated to practice in that. So. It's not something that's going to be easily explained to people, even if they are, for the most part, involved in, in, you know.
I, I think Glenn, you, you brought up a really good point to distinction, if you will. We, we have the information available, maybe we need to do a better job of pushing it out. Just because we have it there and we're expecting people to come and get it, to pull it, maybe we got to take the initiative and do a better job of pushing it out to them because they might not be coming looking for it. We got to do it, get it out to them.
Yeah, and you know, Catherine, for all, you know, to give credit where credit's due, Catherine does put a lot of stuff on Facebook and Suzanne puts a lot of things on the website. But when we do have this communications director, they're going to be more sophisticated in how they're phrasing things and, and how they're essentially grabbing the attention of residents. It is an art. It's not just simply putting something out there and hoping the masses see it. There is a formula and an algorithm and figuring out that algorithm, you know, is, is a multimillion dollar network now.
You're an attorney, you're not talking about algorithms, are you?
Just like, I don't know much about math either, except for, you know, how to bill in point six increments.
All right, anything else for the good? We can switch back over to the main session. I, I see somebody from the public actually joined us. Peter, we're getting ready to move back to our main session. You can find that also on our website if you're interested in joining us there. So, we're going to switch back over and share the thoughts that were shared and then kind of wrap up for this evening. And I will see you all on the, at the other meeting.
On the other side.
On the other side, yes. I was ready to say that, I thought that sounds kind of weird, but anyway. All right, thank you all.
I'm going to send you this Word document.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, sure.